Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. Thank you all so much for being here today. Today is October 20th, Thursday, the time is now 2:08 PM. Madam Clerk, I call this budget session order.
All right, good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, members of the governing body. We are here to begin our more in-depth discussion of the 2026 budget. We have a lot of information to cover today, but please feel free to ask questions as we go. So you'll notice on our agenda, we're going to talk about the update on fire protection fund projection, the hotel motel tax allocation, and our respective general fund. Items to include our American Rescue Plan, LAPP salaries, cost drivers for our 2026 budget, and path forward for addressing the deficit. Originally, we had proposed a .42 mill increase for our fire protection and a .7 mill increase for urban services. Well, luckily, this is probably the best news we'll talk about today. Soon after that, the next day, we actually received our 2025 insurance premium tax from the state, which was on October the 15th, which shows a 14% increase over 2024, which enabled us to revise our revenue projection based on that three, on our three-year trend. Keeping in mind, again, it's based on the past three years. So we have revised that budget line item to include no mill increase for the fire protection or urban services, conservatively projecting a 7.9% increase for 2026, again, based on the numbers that we have been provided. There is no true calculation for this, it's based on tax payments and things of that nature because we reached out to the state to try to get a better understanding of it. And the $90,480 expenditure will be reduced in order to make sure we're balanced. So again, that requires us not to do anything with our fire protection fund. And as you can see here, that the trend with significant growth in the last three years is what you're seeing regarding our fire protection fund. Hotel motel tax increase. As you all know, you may recall our 2025 legislative session, that we discussed the hotel motel tax increase from 6% to 8%. The increase in Augusta's hotel motel tax was approved by the Georgia General Assembly and local ordinance change in 2025. So the collections at a higher rate began on October 1st of this year, and the purpose is to help Augusta grow and promote itself as a destination to attract visitors. Roughly preliminary estimates are showing that we should get 1.3 million in new revenue for 2026, so I guess there's two pieces of good news. And the recommended 2026 usage of those funds, of course, based on the fact that we are looking at the tourism and the attraction, was to allocate 2026 to the capital budget for recreation improvements at our recreational regional facilities, which is like our aquatic center, Diamond Lakes, and things of that nature. The general fund summary. For the rest of our time this afternoon, we're going to focus on our general fund. We'll start again with the summary of our biggest revenue changes and expenditure changes. You see that we have had a slight overall revenue decrease for 2026 and a significant cost increase, leaving us with the net deficit again of the $21 million. In the next few slides, we'll look at the biggest cost drivers for that net increase, and then we'll review options for resolving the deficit. But as you can see, just by looking at this slide, looking at the general fund, the ARPA funds were what we utilize, transfer those funds to balance that budget. As you can see, we won't have that. So that leaves us, even though the revenues may have increased, that still leaves us the $4.5 million deficit, which actually increased because of the respective increases that we have in our expenditures, gives us that 11.6 million in general fund, and systematically the same when it comes to our law enforcement, 9.5 million, which gives us the 21 million. So let's talk about the American Rescue Plan. First, however, I know Commissioner Pulliam had asked for more background information about the American Rescue Plan funding. As we just saw on the previous slide, roughly 7.4 million in ARPA funds was used to balance the fiscal year 2025 budget for the last time. These funds are not available for 2026. Your packet for today's session includes a summary of the ARPA expenditures. We will share just the highlights here. I think there may be a slight misperception out in the community that ARPA funds were used to create a lot of short-term positions. It was not. That is not actually the case. There were a few positions created specifically with ARPA funds, and those are listed on this slide. The only two of these positions that is continuing with the general revenue are positioned in the Board of Elections, which the commission approved last year, and the other positions are being sunsetted as the funding expires. Instead, the ARPA funds was used for a variety of one-time projects, and more importantly, to help offset, this is the big piece, offset the respective deficits in a number of our funds for the past few years. So we started getting the ARPA funds in 2021, and the same issues that we're facing today were the same issues we had been facing in 2021, and we used those ARPA funds to take care of balancing those out. So now, again, this is not the only thing, the ARPA funds, the loss of it, is going to be the impact of a $21 million budget, but it's a lot of the same things that we're facing now is what we had been facing since 2021. Instead, again, the ARPA funds were used for those one-time projects. These should be familiar to you because there are many cases, the same issues we're talking about now. 22.4 million was used for general fund revenue replacement. 11.5 million was used to pay for plan supplements, including bringing employees up to a $15 an hour salary. 6 million was used to offset health insurance costs, so that sounds familiar, we were having health insurance issues then, and we used that money to offset those. 3.8 million was used to address the deficit in streetlights.
Madam Administrator, where is that? Is it in this presentation?
No, sir, this is my notes.
Okay. Can you make sure the governing body gets a copy of that, if you don't mind?
Yes, sir.
Right, thank you.
3.8 million was used to address the deficit in streetlights, which we know we have been facing again, the streetlights issue, until the governing body just recently made a change to help us try to offset and get out of some of the debt we're in with that. And then 2.7 was used to offset the transit subsidy from the general fund. These are the same issues, again, we are trying to address now, same issues. It's just that we had the money then to offset it and take care and address those issues, but most of these are the same. So these issues have been, again, here for the past three, four years, I mean, it's been a number of years that we've had these issues, we just had the funds to take care of offset those issues. LAPP salaries, that's a whole nother story. You know, we talk about LAPP salaries. I'll admit, me and Tim have had a number of conversations in regards to LAPP salaries, but LAPP salaries are a budgeting tool that are very normal for agencies like ours, but they can be confusing, so I just want to make sure that we're all on the same page when it comes to the LAPP salaries. In our budget, every department is budgeted as if you had 100%, all positions filled. Of that approved and funded positions would be filled, you're expecting it to be done for the whole year. So if my department has five active positions, I will have the funding in my budget for all five of those positions, regardless of whether some of those positions are currently vacant. Vacant positions are usually budgeted at the minimum of that salary grade. However, we know that during the course of the year, we are constantly having turnover, and we sometimes have persistent vacancies that stay vacant for months. To avoid having all those tax dollars sit unused on the back end, finance budgets and estimated savings for vacancies at the fund level. We don't know which specific department may have a vacancy come up, so finance accounts for this at the higher level based on trends across the board. That saving allowance is called your LAPP salaries, so it's like they put those funds in a bucket, and that bucket is used to offset the deficit that we face, so to kind of balance out the budget. And we need to look at the LAPP salary amount each year to make sure it keeps up with our recent trends. This year, we have had a higher level of vacancies in the general fund. Number of vacant positions. So finance has recommended increasing the LAPP salary estimate by $1.5 million, from 5 million to 6.5 million. That is 1.5 million estimated savings to the bottom line. This is good news from a budget perspective, but probably not from a service perspective. On the other hand, in law enforcement, the sheriff's office has been able to fill many positions, which of course is good news, we talked about that. But based on the trend for 2025, finance is recommending that we cut their LAPP salary estimate in half from 6.1 million to 3 million. This change is the biggest single cost increase in the law enforcement fund for 2026. This is bad news from that perspective, because, you know, from the budget inside is bad, but again, it's great news for the fact that we'll be able to provide better services because he's filling those positions. So we have less money sitting there vacant than sitting there because of vacant positions because the sheriff's offices have done a great job in filling those positions. And keeping in mind also the structure, the pay structure for the sheriff's positions in order for him to recruit good people, personnel on his team, that increased as well. So the governing body approved for us to proceed with all of those things, and now we're just reconciling those respective costs. I also want to note, we sometimes talk about freezing or eliminating all vacant positions, and you might hear Tim say that we will not actually help the bottom line very much, and he does, he reminds me that too. The LAPP salaries is why. We already accounting for the vacancies and the turnover in our budget. So if you want to significantly reduce personnel costs, unfortunately, we have to look at the field positions. So that's why we bring that to you. When we're saying you want to reduce the amount of positions, we can, we can do that, but the only way you're going to really capture a savings is make it by reduction in force, meaning there has to be a body in that position. All right, let's look at the employee cost. Now I want to review some of the biggest cost drivers tied to our employees. As we have discussed extensively, Augusta, like everywhere else, continues to be hit hard with the rising healthcare costs. We've already had that discussion. We realize they've been increasing each year, and unfortunately, we did not increase the respective healthcare costs, so now we're, we're kind of playing catch-up. So I want to thank you for approving the increases to our employee premiums and deductibles for 2026, which of course is our first step to have been updated in a number of years. I know some of you wanted us to be more aggressive in raising the rates than we were. However, we recommended a phased approach because we are mindful of the significant impact these changes can have on our employees. We have already discussed that we need to look at the whole plan structure for the 2027 plan year. In the meantime, we need to be realistic about the rising costs we will likely continue to face for 2026. We are increasing those estimates by about 2.4 million in the general fund and 2.5 for law enforcement. I want to make a note that this law enforcement amount also reflects the full year cost of the new employees that we just spoke about. Augusta employees did not receive a cost of living increase in 2025. The proposed budget does include a 3% COLA for 2026, which carries a projected cost of about 1.3 million for our law enforcement and 1.7 million for the rest of the general fund. Now again, I know it may seem counterintuitive to include an increase when we are actually facing a deficit, but I truly believe we need to start consistently building in a COLA to our base budget if we want to attract and retain innovative, hard-working employees, especially as we make benefit changes. In the budget presentation, the mayor asks about the merit increase. In order to implement a merit increase program, we need a robust performance evaluation process, and you know we don't have a robust performance evaluation process, but I will assure, ensure, I mean, assure you that that is something that we are working on. Otherwise, we open ourselves to concerns of inequity, you know, you have subjectivity, you have all kinds of concerns, and you may have additional damaged morale because the process could not include things that were not subjective. I have learned this year that not all departments are currently conducting performance evaluations. Part of our new HRIS will be a performance management tool in 2026. That will be the first time some supervisors have actually conducted an evaluation. I would recommend that we allow time to implement a solid process and consider merit increases tied to performance for 2027. So let's look at other sheriff's office cost. Again, we need to absorb the sheriff's office salary increases that you approved last year, totaling roughly 2.6 million. The sheriff's office continues to pursue grant funding that may help with new personnel costs, but we need to build the listed costs into the budget for 2026, just in case he's not able to bring on any additional funding through grants. These new personnel also increase our cost for health benefits, as we just discussed, as well as uniforms, gasoline, vehicle costs, software licenses, equipment, and other respective operating costs that are associated with each new officer that we bring on. We are doing another pass on the proposed budget for those items, including the cut process, but we do know there will be increased costs in these lines. Rising costs for healthcare also affects the medical care for the inmates at Charles B. Webster. With escalating food and supply costs, the fiscal year 2026 budget includes a net increase for prisoner costs of just under $1.5 million, just for us to house the prisoners. Then of course, we know that we have received the approval for a new Superior Court judge. The Georgia General Assembly approved the sixth judge for the Augusta Judicial Circuit during the last session. Both the district attorneys and public defender's offices will need to create new trial teams to staff the additional court docket. The total anticipated cost of these new personnel is just over a million dollars. The cost for the Superior Court itself will be partially offset by savings from the changes made this year under House Bill 85, and I think Judge Fley came in and spoke, and everybody knew what was going on with that. Other than potentially a new directive for vegetation and grounds maintenance, which we will discuss at our next work session, these are the only new positions included in the 2026 budget. So, again, we get to how do we address this deficit? This is, of course, the, the big question on the table. How do we take care of it? Here is the plan we presented to you with the proposed budget. We will talk about the four highlighted items in further detail today, and we will discuss RCCI and HCD at an upcoming work session. I will also note that the NGO number reduction has increased slightly by about 32,000 to reflect that one of our assisting NGOs, existing NGOs, the Senior Citizen Council, has closed and has been removed from the allocation altogether. One mill is roughly equivalent to $8 million in collections. If increased by one mill, 4.5 million is available from the projected surplus as you, as we showed on the previous slide, because this is what we will have if we did the two mills, you will have 4.5 million as a surplus. So say for instance, you want to just do that and do the one mill instead of the two mill, you can use that 4.5 million from the projected surplus, you can have 3.5 million in additional costs, which would mean additional 2% to 5% cost across the board. And that's assuming all other cuts will be made as proposed originally, meaning that whatever we presented to you before, across the board, those cuts would have to be made. If there is no mileage increase, because I'm sure 11 of the 11 of you want no mileage increase, and none of our citizens who are sitting in the room with us wants one, one either, 8.42% additional cut to all departments, all departments, including the sheriff's office, and if you exclude the elected officials, if, you know, you find it in your heart to exclude the elected officials, 22.86 additional cut to the general fund departments. So, we talk about the impact, and I know George has done this great story about a 31% So we talk about the impact, and I know George has done this great story about a 31% increase, you know, that, that great way to make everybody get all riled up. But if you look at the impact of a two meal increase on a $100,000 house, you're actually looking at about $70 a year. If you look at it on a $200,000 house, you're actually looking at $150 a year. So I, I'd rather say, George, probably 1250 a month. It's probably a good way to say it, as opposed to the 31%, but you know, that's basically what it is. 1250 a month for the two meal on a $100,000 house. So let's look at the tax cap. I know that has come up too. Y'all wondering about how the military rate changes would affect our tax cap. This slide shows our tax cap calculations for the current year 2025. Again, this is for the current year, not the proposed budget. But with the general fund rollback rate you adopted for 2025, we are currently 4.877 meals under the cap, which is about 41 million dollars. So if we increase the mileage for 2026 by two meals as originally proposed, we would expect to still be at about 2.8 meals under that cap. By one meal, we would be 3.8 meals under the cap. Again, this didn't happen overnight either. You know, a number of years, we, in, in good intentions, did a rollback. But I think we probably did the rollback for about nine years with no increases whatsoever. All of these things are now catching up to the decisions that have to be made by this governing body. General fund positions. So when we start talking about reductions and cuts, I want you to really see the number of positions we have. Just to give you some context about how many positions we have in the general fund and law enforcement funds. The first column shows our position count for all staff, 2,331. The 99 positions that you see remaining in the public safety are animal services and RCCI. So if you look over to the last column and you'll see, in excluding the elected officials, the, the governing body only works with 738 employees. The rest of the employees are in other departments that are not normally controlled. You provide them funding levels, and they could do and hire as many employees or things that they choose. So this is what you really control as it relates to the positions. So if we're talking about making major reductions in staff, and I hear it all the time, again, I'm wanting to say, I'm not sure if we really streamlined when we did consolidation as it relates to personnel, if we still have duplications in, in departments. Yet, that is something we will be looking at in 2026. But right now, if you just look at the number and you say, cut 10% of your staff, you're going to be cutting about 73 positions. But then what services? How are those services going to be affected? Because if you don't have the respective personnel that you, as a governing body, actually control, how is that going to get done and how are we going to still meet the needs of the constituents? So basically, we're in a real, and I hate to say this word because I say it all the time, we're in a real tough decision-making position. And it's, it's really going to come to the policies. So we had a 3% across the board cuts. I want to thank every department who tried, I mean, everybody who came back. They provided the information to our finance department as requested. Everybody didn't quite make the 3%. Finance is still working on those numbers. But as of today, you know, the target savings was 5.7 million, and we received 3.7 million. So several departments have already notified us that they will not be providing any cuts. These are the departments that you see. Because, you know, they said they will not be able to absorb the reduction of 3%. So we'll be working with them to see how we can get through that. But those are the, those are the ones who have not been able to meet the 3% reduction. I'm bringing this to you as an interim update, just to, just to indicate that across the board cuts are not easy fixes. And if you are looking at more severe cuts, we expect that many of our elected officials will eventually push back and say they can't do it. The sheriff's office, as you can see, is not on this list. Our marshal's office is not on this list. They have worked with us to get us the necessary information. But, you know, and, and I've, I've gotten a note from Ms. McIntyre, and I understand her plea and why she could not do it. I understand some of the other elected officials. So I'm not saying anybody, these are the ones who just said they could not make that match, meet the match that was required of them. So we will be working more detail about the impact of the proposed cuts because the ones who did meet the 3%, believe me, we heard how it's going to affect their budget. Some of them, again, there was not a major issue with it, but they will have some form of impact to their budget. And we're looking at November 6th bringing you those respective impacts. We have also gotten, you know, emails from different groups that want to come in and present. We have, I've informed them that we have not determined that date yet. It will probably be in November. We just want to make sure we get the general fund and all this information to you first. And then you can have them come in and speak and present to you their recommendations for their budgets or how it's going to be impacted, their budgets and operations are going to be impacted. All right, our non-government organizations. Your packet includes a handout of our NGO agencies, which has been updated with multiple funding scenarios. The 2026 recommended budget already included a 30% reduction for the discretionary agencies. Those are agencies that you don't have to, and, and I hate to say that because I think everybody's doing great work. That is not the purpose of me saying it. But these are ones that you're not mandated to continue to provide funding to. And a 10% reduction for authorities and other non-discretionary agencies, like our public health and the library. The general fund savings for those changes is about 874,000 dollars. Now, if we went 50% reduction for discretionary agencies, you would have additional 288,000, which the elimination of discretionary agencies would end up giving us a one, oh, a little over a million dollars back to the general fund. And our urban services, we utilize those funds to help support ACE program. So the proposed cut would give a cut reduction of 191,000. And 50% is about, eliminates about, gives them 384,000 savings. That would give us 384,000 savings when we do the respective reduction. Note on your handout that we also have a number of multi-year contracts that need to be reviewed as well, which Augusta may terminate, you know, and that's something we have to work with legal, with proper notice. You could also consider cutting some of, or all of these contracts for potential savings, again, an additional 221,000. Again, that becomes a policy decision. These are things that didn't just happen yesterday, didn't happen last week. These are things that have happened over the years that Augusta has absorbed the respective cost of many of these non-government organizations. Certain ones like ACE provides a service. ACE provided a service because we were not providing, doing a good job of providing that service. So some of it is a little different, but unfortunately, when we have to do the reduction, we have to consider all of our respective agencies that are considered to be non-governmental organizations. The next thing we did, we proposed that transit make a reduction by 1 million. So we received the proposal back from Ms. Dottery, and it would include eliminating one administrative assistant, reducing operating cost, reducing the bus on routes five, six, and seven. Those are the routes right now that currently have two buses servicing them. It would take it down to one, and eliminating Saturday service, giving us a total savings of 884,000. This slide lists the changes that would be made to the routes. These three routes currently, again, have the two buses servicing them. So the proposal will reduce them to one. Ms. Dottery recommended this rather than eliminating service to any of the respective routes. So as we have noticed throughout the years, our numbers for ridership has decreased tremendously. And when we look at the number of people that have been utilizing our bus system in the past few years, and me and Ms. Dottery and Mr. Jackson have discussed this, it's almost like a hill. That's just how steep the decline is. We might have been here five years ago with ridership. And I know some of them are saying in the audience, well, you got those new electric buses. Those electric buses were funded from the federal government grants. They were not funded out of this respective budget. This is the operational budget that we have to utilize to support the operations. So when we look at our ridership, our ridership started here, and it's just like this, a slope. There are not as many people riding the buses. We looked at the ridership numbers. We continue to evaluate what we're doing. And that's again, and, and I had the conversation with Dottery, that's something else we're going to have to look at. We need to make sure that our ridership, what we're actually offering our citizens is really accommodating our citizens. Because when you see that decline, somebody's not being accommodated, and it's not really meeting what the citizens are looking for. Many of the citizens say, you know, the, the length of time it takes to get from one place to the other, they couldn't keep jobs. So it's a number of things that's impacting it, and we just need to look at where our true ridership is. So that is something that Ms. Dottery is working on. Right here is the monthly ridership for all routes last year. You can see the average on the right of how many people are utilizing the system. For the routes we were discussing, reducing the average daily riders, Route 5 is Washington Road is about 228. Route 6, Gordon Highway, 262. And Route 7 is Augusta Mall around 276. Ms. Dottery, of course, is here and can speak further to the impact that's needed. So I will end it before I open up for questions. Talking about the upcoming work session, Monday, October 27th, we're going to talk about the water rates. We're going to have Mr. Byn here to do a presentation. We're going to also talk about our vegetation and grounds maintenance division, department. Thursday, November 6th, is when we are talking about the respective impact that some of these changes will have. And then Thursday, November 13th, we'll have another follow-up work session. Again, I'd like to take a moment to say thank you to our interim finance director, Tim Schrader, to our budget manager, Rachel Mc, I always screw Rachel's name up. Mc, what is it, Rachel? There we go. And to all, and to all our analysts in the finance department who coordinated the process. I also want to thank the staff that works with me day to day, Ms. Stevens and Mr. Jackson. And of course, Ms. Jeter and Ms. Daly. They have all done a wonderful job in helping me put this recommendation together right down to the seconds before this meeting, while we started a few minutes late because they were putting things together. Thank you for your attention. I look forward to us working together to continue to build the foundation. And now, of course, I'll be glad to address any questions that you may have.
Thank you, Madam Administrator, for that, for your presentation. And thank you to, to all that assisted with putting this together. Before I open it up to the floor, I want to go back to slide, slide 18. Attorney Plunkett, this is going to be a question for you, sir. Slide 18. That's it. Attorney Plunkett, as a governing body, what is our responsibility to, to these departments that have said that they will not be providing any cuts based on this year's budget recommendation?
The commission has an obligation to adequately fund the court systems. And that's kind of within, it's a bit of a negotiation, I guess you would say, in terms of what is adequate. But if you fail to do so, there could be a action to compel that funding. So it's, you know, it's, they have certain functions they have to provide. And if you don't have enough funding for it, then they can't function. And then therefore, you're kind of putting them at harm's way, I guess you would say. So that's, you know, whether or not you can ask them to do a little bit, a revisit of their budget to see if they'll, you know, cut something, that's one issue. But you do have an obligation to adequately fund courts.
Thank you, Attorney Plunkett. All right, let's go into the queue. We have some colleagues that are waiting. First, Commissioner from the Ninth, Commissioner Francine Scott.
Thank you, Mayor Johnson. I'd like to ask the Administrator a question, please.
Yes, ma'am, proceed.
And I think it would be in line with slide 19. You mentioned about the reoccurring contracts. Do we know how much money that this would, what's the total? Do we know how much it is and how many contracts that we're doing reoccurring business with?
You're referring to the multi-year current?
Yes.
Yes, ma'am. I think, you know what, for potential savings of up to 221,000. So you can terminate those with proper notice, so they add up to 221,000. I'm sorry. I did say that in the presentation.
Okay. Mayor Johnson, one more question.
Yes, ma'am, proceed.
The proposed transit reduction?
Yes, ma'am.
And I know we'll probably have Ms. Dotter come up, and she may not need to today. Do we know why the ridership? Is it because they don't have, the timing is diff, it's not what the citizen need? Or is it just people are driving, driving cars more here in Augusta?
I think I'll let Ms. Dottery address that.
Director Dottery, thank you for being here today, ma'am.
Thank you, sir. Good afternoon, Mayor, Commissioners, Administrator. The reason we have a reduction in ridership is based on the fact that over the years, doing the same thing, having budget cuts, cutting our services, people are not riding the way that they did. And then in changing our routes, we changed these route times, I want to say in 2010. And during that period, when we went to this 40-minute headway, people waiting 40 minutes, that was a reduction in ridership. Because normally, except for bigger systems, you have a 30-minute wait. And we went to a 40-minute wait. So people stopped riding the way that they were. And some people probably got jobs that afforded them, you know, to get transportation of their own.
Thank you, Commissioner. From the Ninth, you recognize this, Commissioner Stacy Pulliam from the Second.
Thank you, Mayor Johnson. I'm going to rearrange my questions since you're already here, Ms. Dottery. Thank you so much for your presentation, Administrator Allen, you and everyone that worked on it. It's greatly appreciated. Ms. Dottery, you were talking about our ridership. So in the graph that we were presented, it gave the different routes. Can you explain to me the pickup and drop off? Because if I'm, is this just for people getting on the bus? Or people getting on the bus and being dropped off? For instance, if I live on West Parkway and I travel to Washington Road, how is that, how is that calculated? Are you calculating me twice?
Okay. The ridership is based on how many people are getting on the bus at each stop. So we get the monthly totals for that as people are getting on, and we are counting those people. Now, we do count the people that get off, but the ridership is based on people that are getting on the bus.
Okay. So I remember being a little girl in, in Virginia, different. But my grandmother didn't drive, and so we would catch several buses to get where we were going. So as it pertains to this, how are you? So as it pertains to this, how are you calculating for people that have to catch several buses? Are they being counted one time with a ticket, or how are they being counted?
They are being counted twice, each time you're getting on that bus. So if you get on a bus, and you're counted to get on that bus, but then you're gonna transfer to another, then you're gonna get a transfer slip from the bus you just got off of. So you're gonna be counted on that next bus getting on there, it's just not giving them a transfer, and then you're not counted anymore. So you're accounted for when you get on that next bus, you're on Washington Road, and now you want to get on, say, Gordon Highway. You're gonna be counted when you got on that bus.
Okay. Thank you for that. I want to say, as it pertains to our public transportation, I want to be very cautious in making cuts for several reasons. One of the reasons is, as we start to talk about emission rates, and what our emission rates are from a car standpoint, and different studies that are being done, I know in some cities, and they have to actually take a look at, every time you go to reregister your vehicle, your vehicle has to go through inspection. And when it goes through that inspection, it, it's, they look at the emission rate, and like, the pollution, and all of those things. So as Augusta grows, and that becomes problematic, and we need public transportation to make sure that those rates are down, what are we gonna do? So as we're considering cuts, we also need to look at the different departments that take that information, and I don't know if that's connected to a department in planning, or if that's transit. I'm not sure exactly who is calculating that information, but we definitely need to take a look at that. Because if we're right there on that borderline, making sure that we are marketing our public transportation may be a better fix, so to speak. But that was my, that was the rest of my, that was all of my questions for you, Ms. Daughery. Thank you. My next question is regarding the contracts as well, as Commissioner Scott pointed out on slide 19. Administrator Allen, when we're looking at the contracts that are, I think you said $221,000, have we taken into consideration what the effect on the community is going to be at large? So as we look at each contract, that our NGOs are, because that was just for NGOs, is that correct, those contracts we were talking about?
No, not just for the...
Okay. That was for all of our, so...
Reoccurring, multi-year contracts that we have in place.
Okay, all right. So that was not NGOs, that was our contracts with departments?
No, no, you're correct. This is part of the NGO reduction, but it's the ones that we do have the multi-year contracts with.
Okay, all right. So have we looked into, if we cut these contracts, what would the effect be on our community? What services these contracts are providing? As we look at, on a federal level, because that trickles down, right? And so as we're looking at certain things, like SNAP benefits, and all of these different things that are being cut, and some of our families heavily depend upon those benefits, farm-to-table, all of that type of stuff, have we taken a deep dive into look and see if we cut these contracts, what exactly are they funding? And can our communities absorb that? Or is that going to put them in even more of a greater need for those services? Have we done that?
I'll be honest with you, Commissioner Pulliam, at this high-level rate of what we're doing, and coming back with the reductions, and looking at everything, we, it's a policy decision.
Yes, ma'am.
Not necessarily a decision on us looking and investigating and seeing what they're doing, because I can assure you, anyone I call, they're gonna say it's gonna affect them in what they're doing. So it has to be a policy decision as to you guys determine, do you want to reduce that area of the budget? Or if you want to continue to, to take it on the backs of the, the general fund? Because that's, I hate to say it, and I'm, with all due respect, it's about, how do y'all want to, what's the policy that y'all want to follow? It's a policy decision at this point. Every one of those NGOs do great work, and each one is gonna say it's gonna be a major impact. I would, if I was an NGO. So I don't think anybody's gonna get there and say, eh, go ahead and do it, I can, I'm all right, it's not gonna impact me. They're gonna all say it. So I, I don't think, I guess what I'm saying, I think it would have been an exercise that would have taken a lot of staff time, when we need to really focus on bringing you guys something valuable back.
Okay.
I think I'd rather have us spend that time, and then doing that. Now, they will have an opportunity to come before you and tell you the impact. That's what we're saying about November 6th. But to get where we are right now, I would rather the time and the exercise be dealt on bringing back a proposal, rather than listening to each individual, tell us what's gonna, how it's gonna impact them. As I stated earlier, we've gotten, I've gotten emails, and I responded, and I said, we will have that at some time, but not right now, as to how it's gonna impact them. And then the governing body can determine, as a policy, based on what that person said or that organization said, I don't want to do that.
Okay. And thank you for that answer. So as we talk about, from a high-level view, it is the job of this body to make sure that its citizens are okay. They put us here. They elected us. They elected us to be a voice for them, and to make sure that the city is running the way it should run. We're at the top, if you're looking at a hierarchy. And so they depend upon us to make sure that any services that are being, that are needed, are being provided. And so if we don't do that deep dive into seeing how the funding is going to impact our citizens at large, we failed at our job. Because that's why we're here. If they didn't go out and they didn't elect me, then I wouldn't be speaking up for them, and I wouldn't be talking about what they needed and what's needed in my community. And so I want to make sure that we are keeping that in mind. So it may take more work, but I think on the front end, what could be done is some metrics could be put in place, much like I know Chatham County has, in their blueprint plan. So the NGOs actually have to fill out applications, and they're more than willing to share that information with us. And I do get that every municipality looks different. However, if our NGOs had to fill out an application and actually show what is going on within the year, and who they've impacted, and what services have helped to keep the services that our citizens need going, then that could help. That could be a great help. But I can't say that it's too much work. And I do understand that it's a policy decision, but putting policies in place that don't protect our citizens is a, it's not, that's not a good policy.
And I don't disagree with you. I agree 100% that it needs to be a deep dive. What I'm saying is, I'm giving them the opportunity to come and show you the impact. Telling me the impact and selling the impact to you is two totally different things. Selling to this governing body who has the final decision-making. And that's why I was saying, it's better time spent on this, and getting this information prepared to provide to you. And then they can have an opportunity to come before you, and everybody in the governing body can make that decision. You're exactly right. They, they vote you guys in, and that's why I want to bring all this information to you, so you, as the governing body, can render that final decision, based on what the information that we provide to you.
Okay. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Commissioner Pulliam. Chair recognizes Commissioner from the Fifth, Commissioner Don Clark.
Thank you, Ms. Allen. Lot to go into, lot to discuss, for sure. Got a couple of questions, real quick. When it comes to, I'm looking for my note that I wrote, okay. When it comes to the, I know we didn't talk about, I know we were talking about the rightsizing. And was the DB, is it DBE Department?
Yes, sir. It's compliance now.
Compliance, compliance, thank you. Did we look at potentially doing a rightsizing of that department, or pretty much a merge of what it once was? Back into, I think, DBE was under procurement, and I'm not sure about EEO, but I'm assuming that may have been in HR?
I'm, I'm not sure. I know DBE used to be under procurement. I'm not sure about the EEO piece.
Okay.
And/or the respective staff that's in that department. It's a very small staff.
Yeah, I think it's only like three or four of them, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So I think we may want to look at that piece of it as well, because it, I think it brought a little bit more efficiency, and it, it kind of kept us from having a separate department all on its own. But again, I'd have to rely on you all, legal as well, to kind of determine if it's a specific reason why we did it that way. You all know from a historical standpoint?
Working off memory, I believe that compliance DBE was a direct report to the, to the...
EEO was a separate department.
And it reported directly to the commission, as opposed under a department.
Compliance?
DBE was.
It was originally EEO. We had an EEO director, Ms. Humphreys. And then once she left, they reorganized the department and included DBE. So it was already a department, they just included the DBE portion.
Yeah, but I thought the DBE was reporting to procurement at one time. That's what I was told from a historical standpoint.
I'm not familiar with that. I think under the charter, I believe it's the clerk, the attorney, the administrator, and just, we'll call it collectively, compliance of the reports to the commission. Everything else is under departments.
Very good. Thank you all for that clarification. When it goes to the NGO lists, have we gone through there? Because just looking at the list itself, there's some of them that are bona fide services that should have gone through procurement, should have been bid out, and otherwise. Have we looked at that, kind of determination to determine which ones would better fit as a service that should go through procurement?
The only one that I could think of that's more of a service would probably be what we have with downtown ACE program. That's probably a service. And, and keeping in mind how the ACE program started, it was actually people that did that for no cost to the city, managed it, and did the, the work of things that they felt we were not doing a very good job of and maintaining. And then the funding ran out, and they came before the governing body, as I understand it, and the governing body started providing funding for them to continue the program.
Okay. Yeah, I mean, I think it's just, that one, to me, sticks out as it's a service, right? And that's something that, and I talked to the procurement director about it, on if there were any additional ones that would have been, you know, considered a service. Can we ask him to come up, Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Pennick?
Good day, sir, and thank you so much for being here.
Thank you. Good afternoon.
Hey, how you doing? Mr. Pennick, did you get an opportunity to go through the lists of our outside agency summary, to see?
I received the list, yes, Commissioner, from finance, and started to go through it. Have not completed that process.
Okay. All right. And Ms. Allen, you're saying, from your vantage point, only one pretty much kind of fits the mode of what a service, I guess, would be?
I, I guess you can look at some of them as services, when you look at some of the 501(c)(3)'s that are under the discretionary. And, but, you know, it depends on how you want to define what they're doing. Like your MACH Academy, you can look at that as a service. I mean, you have somebody providing tennis lessons in one of the facilities. So I guess it depends on how you want to actually look at it. That could be a service. If, and again, it goes to the policy, if y'all want to continue those services.
Right. I got you. Yeah, and I think with a lot of these, because some of these duplicate even services that we offer internally to the county itself, right? So we got Parks and Rec, we have Newman Tennis, and so on, they provide some of the same services that, for that example you just used, MACH Academy provides, in some sense. So I think we need to kind of, I mean, we're gonna have to go through this, and we're gonna have to make a dent on this, because some of these historically predate most of us up here. And we're gonna really have to dig into, because my, my hesitancy with talking about some of these is, if we don't have backstory, what started these, what were the connections, what were the agreements, and so on, then we may intentionally kind of introduce ourselves into some kind of, you know, ownership of something that we really aren't informed of. Mr. Mayor, can I ask the attorney a question?
Yes, sir, proceed.
Attorney Plunkett, have you all looked at some of these historical agreements? You know, I know specifically, Department of Public Health is in the charter, but it is a state entity itself. But again, I have no idea how that even came to be a conversation to where a local municipality would add a state entity into its charter, as a service that we would supplement.
The short answer is, no, we have not, you know, been requested, or that's something that we're undertaking. I could, if there's particular ones that you have interest in, I could give you a little, I could find the, or try to find the history of that. I mean, I, I know there is something about Augusta having wanted to retain its right for public health, and I think that's why it was in there. Anecdotally, I think a lot of Augusta has done things their own way, to be quite honest with you, over the years. So, but I'd be happy to try to find out about the history on public health, if that would be something, but we have an undertaking to go through all the contracts.
Well, and, and the reason I ask is because you have a state entity that's receiving state funding, but they're also receiving local funding from a local municipality. Is there some type of predated legal agreement that forces us to do that? Because, and the reason I ask that is because, at some point in time, this was enough of an emphasis that they put it in the charter.
Again, I don't know specifically, but there's, I mean, you just have to start off with the idea that Augusta is a fairly old city, second oldest in the state, and so there's things that oftentimes predate constitutions and things like that. But I'd be more than happy to try to find out the history. I'm not sure I will be able to, but I'd be more than happy to try to find out and provide something to you prior to the next, you know, meeting or something like that.
Yeah, well fortunately, it doesn't go back to 1736, so you don't have to go back that far. You just have to go back to whenever we established the charter.
Well, I mean, Ms. Bonner said it was a county function previously. What I'm saying is, I don't know why the county had it versus a state function. That's, that's what, having to figure out how far it is.
So if I can, if I can speak to that. We did meet with the Department of Public Health, and again, as Ms. Bonner stated, it started out that way, and it is included in the charter. It does state that we have to provide assistance or provide funding to that organization. It doesn't say how much funding. That, that has been the concern. I did speak to a lot of other outside municipalities. They support that as well. They may call it something different, you know, public health or something else. But in those cases, in some of the cases, I have found them to support that. So on that list that we provided to you, and I apologize, I didn't have it with me earlier, the Department of Public Health, you'll see the ones that are mandated funding, doesn't mandate the amount that you have to provide to those agencies, but it does say they're mandated. So the Georgia Forest Street Commission, the Department of Family and Children's Services, the Augusta Public Library, and we heard from Mr. Mitchu as it relates to the library, and in his presentation, of course, is not a city function.
Sure.
It's not a state function. They're their own entity. However, we have committed to providing funding to them. Doesn't say you have to provide the same level of funding each time.
Right.
As he's already expressed to me, a reduction in his is gonna cause an impact on him and his operations, and he'll be able to bring that back in November as well. He's one of the agencies I was referring to earlier. And then the CSRA Regional Commission is the other one. So those are...
And that's state mandated.
Yes, sir.
Okay, I got you. All right, yeah. Just like I said again, coming into this well after a lot of these agreements were established, just want to make sure that we're kind of covering ourselves from any potential, you know, fallback or litigation response, because we're stepping into something that we haven't executed the due diligence from a legal standpoint. So that's why I'm bringing it up to the attorney, if you all can assist with determining that we don't walk into any landmines with that. When it comes to, because I didn't, I don't think, and maybe I missed it, so I apologize for that, the RCCI, have we done a cost analysis yet on that?
Yes, and that is one of the things that we'll be presenting at our next meeting, when we do the vegetation and ground maintenance.
Very good. So, I know the mayor kind of alluded to it a little bit, the 3% cut, if we... The 3% cut, if we decided to do a mandatory 3% cut across the board, and this is for the attorney. I know your crystal ball is probably just as dysfunctional as mine, but need a legal opinion on this.
And you're talking about across the board in terms of all constitutional officers, courts, everything?
Yes, sir.
I think that you would probably find yourself in a situation where there's going to be one or more either elected or constitutional officers of the courts who are just going to say that you're inadequately funding. And they'll bring, I'm not sure the right answer is a mandamus, but would it be an action to bring you to court to say that you need adequately funded?
Yeah, and, and so the question and concern I have about that, I know, and this was before I came, before I came into office, there was a proposal, there was a approved cut, the cuts happened, and then throughout the year, the departments came up one by one, and it just turned into a flood of everybody saying, hey, I can't afford to sustain this cut. What do we have in place that really kind of prevents, because right now, we're dealing with a deficit. So if we go back on the cut, it introduces more deficit, more debt to the situation, correct?
Yes, yes, sir.
All right, so, but what do we have in place to really kind of mandate this? Because we're also in a situation where some of the departments that we're talking about, and some of the different divisions and, and functions that we're talking about have elected officials, and they're adding to their budget as well. So it's kind of a, it's a catch 22 across the board. Okay, you mandate that we're going to do a 3% cut, but I'm going to come before you all, tell you all the significance of why I can't afford it and why I need to add this. I mean, it's like we're, we're in the catch 22 with this. Yeah, because it's like, we're going to do this, like, like, perfect example. District Attorney has a new judgeship that they have to be able to provide support for. So we're going to cut 3% off of his budget, but we're going to add whatever we need to add to supplement it, to support the new judgeship. And we're about to go into a, a very aggressive teeter totter and tug of war because folks feel that they have to still fulfill their functions. So the decisions we make today, then we go into the year and then we up, upend them because of everyone coming before us saying, hey, I need this.
Mr. Clark, you're, you're looking at me. I'm assuming your answer is, you know, as far as, I think that's true for any department.
Right, right.
I mean, it's, it's not just the district attorney, it's not the courts and things of that nature. To the ones that you can cut, your departments and things of that nature, it's up to this body based on your then-current physical projections, can you restore those cuts? The court systems are a little bit, they really don't have the ability to raise their own funds, so they have the, but they have obligations that they have to do. And so it's a balance of, you know, you, you, you know, and it must quintessential thing, you have, you know, people that are accused of crimes sitting in jail, and if you don't have courts, you can't have paid jurors, then you're just going to have people sitting there forever. And so that's on you to do that. And then you have a lawsuit saying that, you know, my civil rights are being violated, you're paying those fees, or those settlements. So the courts are kind of a, and I'm, I'm assuming you're pointing to me because I'm a member of that kind of organization, that, and I'm a little protective of judges just because they, you know, they have something to do with my lifetime. But my, my point of it is, is that they have obligations, just like everything else, and the courts are not a discretion. And prosecution is not a discretion. You know, I'm not picking on that, but parks, you'd need parks, but you don't have to have a park. You do have to have courts. And so that's the difficulty of when are they adequately funded versus, you know, not, you know, inadequately funded. And that's the call. And I think most of the judicial branch, and I'm putting the sheriff and life safety and all that, everybody wants to try to participate and help in the cuts, but we still have to follow our, our legal obligations. So that's the balance and, yeah, I'm, I'm, I think you're very accurate, that people will say they'll cut, and then after they realize what that meant, they come back and say, it won't work. And y'all are in a bind of saying, too bad, and then you get sued. You know, if you say yes, then unfortunately, your situation is you have to figure out either more revenues or cut somebody else.
Yeah, I'm tracking on that. Thank you. I appreciate you allowing me to kind of scratch your back on that one, gain some knowledge. Yeah, I know. And Madam Administrator, if you can clarify, maybe this is going to be in another session, the Parks and Rec. I know we did a usability study on that. Is that going to be included in another session? As far as recommendation of if we're going to look towards closing facilities, if there's going to be any cost savings that comes from that?
Yes, we can look deeper into that as well and bring that back, but that was not scheduled for the next couple of sessions.
So we were looking to do that for next year and try to get deeper into it, like with some of the other facilities and otherwise? Okay, thank you, ma'am.
You're welcome. And just to go back to what Commissioner Pulliam stated about the KPIs and things of that nature. For our NGOs, this was the first time we had them, they did apply and they did have to put in respective benchmarks or industry standards or whatever they're going to be utilizing, performance metrics, to say what they were doing and the impact they would have in the community. So they, and they all did submit that respective information. So just to clarify that.
Commissioner Clark, there's something you need to add?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I forgot one thing. So the KPI piece of it, and, and this was, I was looking at some of the contracts for some of the NGOs. The problem with us doing this is, is not being monitored appropriately. Like somebody should be, supposed to be measuring these, you know, the, 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 the stats of what they're doing, what they're offering. We're not doing it. And it's in the contracts that they're supposed, we're supposed to do it. And if they're over a certain threshold of dollars, there's supposed to be audits that are conducted. So I know we're saying this whole thing about the NGOs, but if we, if we don't have the capacity, and is it a capacity thing for us to go through and measure their effectiveness in the community and what they're providing and so on? Is it our responsibility to say, hey, you need to run an audit? And then we have our finance team go through there and determine if those dollars are being disseminated? Like, I don't think we should be in that business because we don't know their business, we don't know the true impact. And it's so subjective because it'll be so different from all 11 of us up here, if it's a benefit or if it's not. So that's what really is putting us in a situation with these particular entities. Because if we're not even holding them accountable, they're not holding themselves accountable. Because I've been here going on a year, and I haven't seen anybody come forward and say, hey, here's a presentation of our stats, here's a presentation of our finances and so on. So it puts us in a situation. We already have an entity that's doing that through Destination Augusta, where folks apply for funds through them and they get some of the funding and, you know, other organizations throughout the community. But I just think putting us in that situation, we'd have to get a whole separate team to be able to manage that. And right now, we're not doing it, and I don't think we have been.
I, I don't disagree. And again, this is the first time we've asked them to include performance metrics because, you know, Peter Drucker said, what gets measured gets done.
Sure.
And I'm a true believer that you have to show your value, demonstrate your value, make sure you have the respective metrics. That's why each department director will be having respective KPIs included in their performance evaluations as we move forward for 2027. They will also be having a level of expectations that will hopefully coincide with the actual strategic plan that this governing body has been working on now to get finalized for 26, 2026 through 2028. Because we definitely need some kind of blueprint so everybody can start focusing and, and getting on the right path. And that'd be one major part of our foundation being built.
All right, thank you, Ms. Allen.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Commissioner Clark. Chair recognizes Commissioner from the first, Commissioner George Johnson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have a few questions, a few statements. The first, I'll start with the NGOs. I, I want to know, are the ones on this, on this list that's listed as multi-year contracts, the only multi-year contracts we have? The Augusta Armory, the Arsenal Soccer Club, the Convention and Visitors Bureau, the Land Trust, the Forestry Commission, Junior Achievement, Bannon Brothers, Board Education, and the Public Health. Are those the only multi-year contracts that we have through our NGOs? Those are the only ones? Okay, all right. And the only cut that I'm seeing here is from the public, Department of Public Health, from Escuta Control, which is going to be absorbed through garbage collections, throwing water, and general fund.
Through the urban?
Yes, sir. Okay, all right. I want to also mention very briefly that when you have areas like child enrichment that have been very critical in making sure that we're able to crack cases of, of child sex trafficking. I don't know if now is the right time to start cutting them when we just saw a mother trafficking somebody over in Columbia County, but it was a Richmond County situation. Like those kind of organizations, I don't think they have to come before us and tell us that they're doing the work when they're in courts every week showing that they're doing that kind of work. And Serenity Behavioral Health, you know, mental health is something that we always talk about when it comes down to the homeless population. And cutting the behavioral health aspect of everything during the time that, that we're facing with mental health crises around our county. Again, that's a, that's an area where I just don't, I don't, I don't see how we can say that, you know, these are, these are not critical services, safe homes, domestic abuse. We have to really just look at these things as not being just, you know, us funding a wish list, but funding critical services that Augusta does not have the ability to, to, to manage. MACH Academy, for instance, they're not just teaching tennis lessons, MACH Academy, they're giving kids scholarships and helping them get to schools. Kids from Dahlwood Terrace and East Augusta, whose only other option, if they didn't have access to education, is, is the Webster Detention Center, which by the way, is overcrowded. So I, I think that our responsibility should be to, to really dig into this, to figure out how can we, how can we help solve some of the issues in our community versus looking at them as being burdens. And I'm not saying that that's what we're doing, but I, I really want us to be cautious about that. I want to also mention that the Senior Citizen Council, Administrator Allen, you mentioned they've closed. They, they were going to close, but they received their federal funding. And so they're on track to open them back up. So I would like to look back into connecting with the Senior Citizens Council. I see on the screen that ACE is proposed, there's a 50% proposal to cut ACE. I will never support a budget that supports cutting ACE, never. Because our departments don't go to Broad Street and clean up on the weekends. Certainly, we don't go down there to clean up. I see them every day before the sun is up. They're out there cleaning up Broad Street. They're out there cleaning up. I mean, getting gum off the sidewalks, painting things. I would never support cutting that. Downtown Augusta is, is under some of the most crucial renovations right now, and they're out blowing dust. So ACE is not just a, a, a community service group. They are a critical service. And I suggest that we, we look into a way to, to fund them fully. I want to also mention, I have a couple of questions about, let's see here, on page 18, the courts, the slide 18, the courts. I mentioned that the jail is overcrowded and that if we cut these courts, I mean, a lot of the reason why we have an overcrowded jail population is just because they don't have the resources now to push these cases through as hard as they can with the six judge coming on, and then with the ability to actually fund some of the work. I think that bonds can be set. I think that cases can be, can be pushed forward. We can get things done. So cutting the departments that's trying to help us clear the jail, I don't think makes much, much long-term sense. Especially when we're getting ready to consider allocating and splotting tens of millions of dollars for a new jail pod that's going to be full overnight. Like, these are the decisions that I don't think are just so cut and dry or just so, as some folks say, just common sense. They need every dollar that they can get because it coincides with the efforts that we're trying to, trying to address with the, with the sheriff's office and, and things of that nature. Now I have two questions, those were my statements. I have two questions. The first one is the right sizing of HCD. I know that you said that that's probably going to be another presentation, but does that, is that just salaries? What is the right sizing of HCD, the half a million dollars? What does that amount to?
Yes, sir. So right now, the general fund subsidizes HCD 1.6 million dollars for their operation. So by right sizing, it, it could be a number of things, but as far as the, the amount to get us to 500,000, it would look at probably, in most cases, restructuring what HCD currently offers. Making sure that we get back to what our core operation is and we meet the needs of our constituents. It's not us saying we want to close HCD or Housing Community Development. That would never come off of my mouth as far as closing them. But to make sure that we are focusing on what we need to really be focusing on and building more credibility back into our community.
Does that mean that there'll be reduction in workforce?
Possibility, yes, sir.
In, in which areas?
That's what we're working through.
I mean, I, I understand that, but it's on the agenda as a, as a proposal. So I wanted to just kind of get an understanding, get maybe either Tim or somebody from HCD can kind of tell us what that 500,000 would amount to.
So, and, and when I say that's what we're working on, because right now, we have a number of vacant positions. We have 27 positions in the department as a whole, and it's only 16 positions that are filled. So it might be a process of eliminating the 11 positions. So I can't say exactly because we also have to look at how the grants are associated with each of the respective positions. So that's what I mean when I say that.
Thank you. May I ask, how did we come up to the 500,000 number?
You know, honestly, I would probably say it would, I would have probably recommended a little more to get us back to where we were, to get us back to the functions. And I know over the years, and I, and I say this from working with Housing Community Development before, and what their functions were, and the situation and costs that it, it would utilize from the general fund. So that's what we want to look at. I'm not, I know things have changed since I was affiliated with it 10, 11 years ago. So that's what we want to do. We want to bring you back a careful assessment of what needs to be done without messing up the respective core operations and functions that the department offers to the citizens of Augusta.
Understand. But I guess the, what I really want to just figure out, just to get a little clarity on, is when you all looked at this budget, how did you come up with the 500,000 as the, as the metric to, to, to reduce?
It was a goal, in all honesty.
So there was no, no real metric? It was just, we want to cut half a million from, from this budget?
It was a goal.
Director Scherer, anything else we can add to that? So it was just, we want to just cut half a million?
Because we knew that, that department needed to be re-looked at and needed to be right sized. So the goal was to see whether or not you could do the 500,000. If we come back, then of course, the governing body has the, again, the, the approval to figure, you know, to say yea and nay in this process. But our goal is to bring you back a department that's going to meet the needs, again.
Understood. My, my whole thing here is, you know, and I won't harp on it too much. It's just, you know, this is where, you know, I want to, I want us to really look at because we don't know if that 500,000 is going to be impacting that department's ability to provide housing, if it will impact their ability to provide lead remediation, if it's going to impact their ability to provide rapid rehousing for the homeless. Like, so when I look at these numbers, and then I'm being told that it was just a blanketed number, I, 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 my, my ears go up a little bit. It doesn't question what you're saying or what Tim is saying, but it does give me calls to go, well, what metrics are we using to put together this budget? And, and what is, what is making me feel like is just we're just trying to find places to cut. And the reality is, if we have a $21 million deficit, we're not just going to be able to cut our way out of it, especially without having a real metric as to how we're even coming up with some of these numbers. But you said that's going to be a different date, and we'll come back to it. Two other questions. The new department, how much funding would it, would it take to stand up a new department for the consolidated maintenance?
What we looked at was roughly 350,000, and the remainder would be from positions that already exist in those other departments to come in to support that department.
Is that baseline, or is that also including salaries and, and things?
That's everything. It would be shifted wherever it is currently in the budget for whatever department, it would be shifted over to the, the new department.
Will we be able to have that each year going forward?
Yes, sir.
Okay, what would be the difference in, instead of creating that new department at 350, to just take all of the maintenance itself and just put it under Central Services?
That can happen. You still have to have.
Is it, would it be at 350, or would it be, would it be a little bit more cost effective?
We would have to look at that. Right now, I'm not sure if the needs would be met under Central Services, and quite, quite honest with you. Because this governing body, again, wanted a department that would focus on just those needs. And so by putting it under another department- And so by putting it under another department, it's no different than having it under another department like it is today. And if we want to see an impact, because right now, Central Services is focused on facilities, vehicles, and I just don't want this to get caught out there and not get done when we've promised the citizens that we're going to have a department that's focused on that.
Yeah, and, and I'm with you on that. But I, I remember at one point, we were talking about creating like a grounds maintenance division under Central Services and having a coordinator focused specifically on that work versus creating a department, creating additional positions with fringe and things of that nature. And I think that we have more cost savings by adding a grounds maintenance division under Central Services versus creating an entirely new department. So at our, at our next meeting, can we, can we have that analysis, like a side-by-side comparison, as to how much it would cost us to just create a division under that department versus an entirely new department that we have to fund every year? Can we get that?
Yes, you can.
Okay, all right. Last question, and I'm going to yield the floor, is about the Sheriff's Office. That is slide number 10. We're showing the 2.6 million for the, that is, help me understand, the 2.6 million, that is money that is needed now to cover for the salaries, or cover for the positions that we funded last year through LAPP salaries? Is that what that is?
Correct.
Okay, all right. And then increased prison costs, the 1.5, that's medical, mental health, things of that nature in the jail, correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Do we have an idea of the amount that it's going to cost for gasoline, uniforms, vehicles, software, and non-capitalized equipment?
We can get that information to you, yes, sir.
Okay. Do, so how much of a deficit, I mean, how much are we looking at with the Sheriff's Office right now? The expenses that they don't have the revenue for?
It is.
Was that 13 million? I'm showing a 13, 487, 940?
Yes, sir.
Have they provided any costs that, that would go into that number? Like, have they showed, have they told us line by line what that 13 million dollars accounts for?
Yes. We have met with the Sheriff's Office.
Okay.
Several times.
Have we, have we received that information, this body?
We have not provided that information.
Can we? Can we get that information? Maddie Sue, I get, you have a, something you want to add? I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor, can we get Maddie Sue?
I'm sorry to interrupt. Yes, sir. The Sheriff's Office is also included in this 3% cut. So the reason we didn't include all these numbers on this slide today is that these are all influx. Even this morning, we were meeting with the Sheriff's Chief of Staff about can we take a hundred thousand dollars here, add 50,000 dollars here? So we will, later in, in this process, in the next week, be able to provide that, just as they're trying to do that 3% cut. They're scraping every penny they can from all their lines.
I definitely understand. But I'm, what I'm, what I'm getting at is, I see 13 million on one page, but then I only see an allocation of 2.6 and then 1.5 on another. That still leaves a substantial, a substantial gap, where I don't understand where the rest of the money is, is being requested for.
Yes, sir. The way it's displayed here, I, I see why you'd be confused by that. It's kind of, it's in different components here, like LAPP salaries and health benefits, but we can definitely provide a summary to you.
I think that would be helpful, because not only is it hard for me to digest it, it's also hard when the community looks at the news and says, we have a $21 million deficit, when just a few months ago, we were only at like 7 million, or 8 million, or something like that. And then the next couple of days, we get a $21 million deficit, and we don't have the figures to even justify where that deficit is coming from.
And the deficit that we presented before was for 2025, and that's what the governing body approved to go to our general fund balance to take care of. So just so that the citizens know, those are two separate things. What we're looking at now, this deficit, is projected for 2026.
Understood, understood. So yeah, so those are the questions. I hope that, I didn't, you know, oh, I got one more. It's all good. We don't got nothing else to do today. We mentioned last year about contract renegotiations, that there are contracts in other areas that, in my opinion, presents a lot of our wasteful spending in our government, that we haven't had a chance to take a look at. We just had a, a big draw out over a hundred thousand dollar lawnmower. Well, that's one of those expenses I'm talking about. So are we prepared to look into those funds, into those contracts, to do renegotiations? Because I'm sure we can find some additional funds if we renegotiate some of these contracts, especially the grass-cutting contracts where we know for a fact we're not getting our bang for our buck. Where are we with contract renegotiations?
You're exactly right. That is something that we will be focusing on in 2026, but we would have to, of course, work with our legal team to go over every respective contract that each department has.
I was hoping that we could have done that this year, because we could have had those figures here for this budget. I know we mentioned it at the last budget cycle, that we were going to do it this year. So I hope that we do it next year, because those funds, I mean, that's millions and millions and millions of dollars. We talked about that $1 billion government we have, that's what, that's where it's coming from. And I know that we can start slicing and dicing some areas there where we know we're not getting our bang for our buck. So I think that's a missed opportunity that we, that we could have capitalized on for this year's budget, but, and that was a lot of the mid-year budget review that I was talking about that, you know.
I, I don't disagree with you, Commissioner Johnson. A lot of those contracts are not necessarily coming from your general fund budget either. Some of those are coming from SPOSS and some other funding entities as well. So those would not still impact this general fund, so.
But the ones that come from the general fund, we need to look at, and we, and we have not.
We do. We do have, and the departments will have to look at each and one of the contracts that they have, and get with our legal team to work and negotiate those with those vendors.
I think that the commission should mandate that that happens. We're mandating 3% cuts across the boards into NGOs and nonprofits that's helping keep kids off the streets and going to college, but we're not mandating the department to look at contracts that we know are just bleeding cash and nothing is getting done. That's why we're having folks call us about grads getting half-cut. That's why you know, if you bought a lawnmower and you were the commissioner, you can create your grass-cutting company, you'll get rich, because the city's just handing money away. We're mandating everything else. We need to mandate that we look at those contracts and pull back on some of this money that's just bleeding out of our door. It's like having subscriptions that you don't use. Cut them.
I don't disagree, but I, I will make this comment. The governing body are the ones who've approved these contracts. They came before everybody sitting, whether it was this year, last year, two years.
Ms. Allen, last year, Ms. Allen, last year, we sat here in the same chambers, and I mentioned that we needed to get this done. You said we didn't have time to do it. I said, well, let's make sure that we get it done next year, which was this year, and it still hadn't gotten done. So although the commission does approve these things, what I'm saying is, we need to make sure that we are mandating that some of these actions happen and that we get follow-through with, from the administration and the department, so that the commission's job can be made just a little bit easier.
I think he was on this side last year.
I was sitting right where Commissioner Scott was sitting. I remember, I remember. But we, and, and, and last, and, and last statement here is that we had this conversation about this lawnmower, which I think is a good thing, because we're looking into it and we're digging in, that mandate needs to come from this body and be followed through, through the department and administration. And with that, Mr. Mayor, I yield the floor.
Thank you, Commissioner Johnson. Mayor Pro-Tim Wayne Guilford, the floor is yours, sir.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Ms. Allen, thank you for bringing us to proposed budget. It's not written in stone. It's something that you, as well as staff, is suggesting on how to reduce the millage rate from hitting these citizens. I know that we had one of our famous news people actually throw out 30%, but that was based off the millage, which I understood that. But in reality, like my property tax and my house is $4,100 a year. It ain't going up $1,200, because the 65% of it's going to the school board. So I, I do need to clear that. But I do, I do like the way Commissioner Johnson from District One was talking about contracts. We need to put that on the agenda. That way, as a body, could actually tell the staff what to do, because there is a lot of money. There's a lot of open-end contract, there's contracts that slobby expired that we still have. There's from the utilities to engineering to every other department we have in here. And with the change of guards that we had over these past couple of years, it got lost in the files. So it would be good for us to look at the contracts. And the first place I would look is through the finance, who we writing checks through for these companies that provides a service. So my colleague is right. Now, when it comes to these, how did we get here? How did we get to 21 million dollars? I knew coming in two and a half years ago, that we was going to be facing a $10 million deficit, because money was given out with one-time money. When the money's given out and raised, it's continuation forever. I was told at a little dinner function that we knew about the 21 million dollars. We didn't know about it.
Right.
And that's a shame, where people actually has the mindset to even think that way. If it was, we would have put, tried to put provisions in place. But what we have tried to do over the past couple of years, from the previous administration, two, two years ago, the staff administration at that time recommended a rollback. Last year, they actually said, the finance person said, we had plenty of money. Nobody was looking at this health insurance that we facing right now, the 17 million dollars in the past seven years. I'm so appreciative that we got a new sheriff that's actually doing a wonderful job, and I've always been supportive of our new sheriff. But over the past couple of years, we have tried numerous things. We tried to right-size the government, but the staff at the time didn't understand on the right sizing, you know, we brought a lot of innuendos, maybe if we, you know, we might get $5 million in sales tax increase, but that's just a wish, never came to fruition. We tried to reduce the budget, everybody's budget by 1%. Simple. If we did that, we could do that in our personal lives. We could do that, in the private sector, we do that quite commonly. It's based off what you have come in of revenues. Your expenses determines, you know, it's based off your revenues, what you could spend out. If not, you're going to go under. You know, we had a, also, we had tried to look at the underutilized parts. You know, every, everything we try and include in these NGOs, which is, you know, recommendation, if we don't change anything that you are recommending, we got 21 million dollars, how much of a millage increase is that?
21 is.
Should be about 2.6, 2.7?
About, almost three mil.
Right. So if, information's very important for us behind this dais for one reason. If I would have known that we, beginning of the year, if we were 21 million dollars in debt, I would have did, my stance would have been different for that, for the House Bill 581, for one reason, is that you could use the half a cent sales tax to lower the millage. But I knew we could find the lost money of the, that was used in raises, but I never encounter, or never would have thought we'd be this far in debt.
And that's still an opportunity for that as well. Depends on whether or not it gets approved in November, and then we'll have to actually do a floss on the referendum for May.
Right. And that would probably be my goal at that moment, because to reduce the exposure to the citizens is the only way to do it, property owners, taxpayers. I want to clarify something that Commissioner Clark was talking about within our charter as far as DVEOC. They are SES employees. It was written in the charter that they answer to the commission. We had Ms. Jacqueline Humphrey, that was the, right, the, she was DBE, but to find two different people, or find one person to handle two different categories was tough, but she tried. But that's, that's how we ended up where we at in that part of it. As far as the RIF employees premiums, the COLAs, the sheriff is willing to cut 3% as well as all these other departments, except the four that you listed, is that correct?
That's what we have so far, yes, sir.
All right. Why don't we go back to them four, because, and see what they can do? It wouldn't hurt, because if you look at it, if the sheriff's willing to cut 3%, the marshal's willing to cut 3%, that saves a lot. It saves a whole lot there, especially with the, the two constitutional officers that's willing to do that and willing to come to the plate and help us out. So that would be, I would ask if you would go back to that transit. I would like to, Mr. Daughtry, I would like to thank you for saving $885,000. That's amazing there. But as far as the ridership, we have 34,000 per month, but you also said if they transferred to another ride or another bus, the rider would be less. How much do we actually pay a year for transit?
About 1.6 million from the general fund.
And then they get grant money? Ms. Daughtry? So total budget that you have for yearly, what is it?
Approximately 20 million dollars, and that's including all of the grants that we receive, along with general fund.
20 million dollars, does that a continuation, it doesn't fluctuate year to year?
It will fluctuate, because it depends on the grants that we receive.
Yes, ma'am.
As we get apportionment grants from the Federal Transit Administration.
Yes, ma'am.
So it depends on what that apportionment is.
Okay. The only reason why I'm saying that is because these big buses, these new electric buses, three to five years, these electric buses are going to become a headache for us. It's going to be expenditure we cannot overcome. I think we all know that. So we better find a home for it. Hopefully, they'll find a use for used batteries.
But there are some things that are changing, you know, after we got these electric buses with our new administration in the White House. So some changes have come down with that, where you can actually choose different types of buses, that you could actually do hybrid, which would be diesel and electric. And then there's CNG, which we're not set up for CNG, and that would just cost more money to get us set up for that.
Yes, ma'am.
But we could do, you know, hybrid buses.
Okay. Does the riders pay to ride the bus?
Yes, sir. You have to.
Okay. What kind of funding is that? That's part of the 20 million?
It's counted in there.
Okay.
It's part of the revenue.
The reason why I'm asking is because in Charlotte, they actually have for your, like the downtown business district, or close proximity areas, is that the city actually provides them with tickets for Uber, free of charge, though. But it's probably less costly than us having to pay for these buses, paying for these routes, et cetera, paying for labor.
Well, now, I can say that, and I've been in transit for 21 years.
Yes, ma'am.
And buses used to cost, you know, like $300,000. These electric buses were 1.1 million.
That didn't cost us anything.
It cost you 10%, because the federal paid 90% of the cost of the bus. It was a 90-10 split.
Wow. I would have had to let that one sit.
They were pushing it really hard.
Yeah, I would have had to let that one sit. All right. One last question. Thank you, thank you so much, and thank you for your willingness to help the county on ways, finding ways to save the money.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
And it's 2 million dollars. I'm sorry, I said 1.6. 1.6 is Housing Community Development. Transit is 2 million.
Okay.
General fund.
So Ms. Allen, if the millage rate does go up by chance.
Yes, sir.
And we find opportunity, ways to save the money throughout the year, we will have up to, what, September, September to reduce it, reduce it?
Yes, when, yeah, because that's when the digest actually goes to Atlanta, so it'll be August.
Okay. Because I know that we have to present a balanced budget here shortly.
Yes, sir.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome. And, and if I can remind you all, the, the budget, of course, is a living document. To Commissioner Guilford's point, it's probably, it changes every day anyway. With any time you have any expenditure or anything, it changes what you have in your budget. But you do have to have a balanced budget when you're going into the following fiscal year. So that is the requirement. If the spend, the expenditures and things are, are held and you can keep it where it needs to be, the amount of respect. amount of respective millage can decrease. It may not be a two mils, it may be a one mil, it may be a less than that, when you get to the point in August. But we would have to carefully, again, monitor what we're doing on a monthly basis and bring back all of the respective projections and forecasts that's necessary to give you the information, again, to make a conscious decision. I remind you all, this didn't just happen this year. This didn't just happen. We just had funds since 2021 that helped us to alleviate and offset those respective deficit. Those deficits always were there. We just had money to take care of them, and now, we just don't have that ARPA funds to take care of them. So, it's nothing that I would say any bad decisions or anything else. I think everybody made decisions that they thought was best for the organization, best for the community. However, now, it has just caught up with us that those funds are not going to be there for us to offset we not doing an increase, or we're not doing some things and making some decisions. I don't want to see a millage increase no more than anybody up there. I don't want to see the organizations, the NGOs reduced. I think they all do great work, but at the end of the day, I have to be fiscally responsible to bring you guys the respective recommendations. That's what you charged me to do. It's not an easy task, but I have to bring it to you, and I know it's not an easy task for you to make the decision, but please keep in mind, we're all on the same team. At the end of the day, my goal is to give you all of the respective information, to be very transparent, very honest, so you know where you stand as a government. And then it's for you, of course, to make those policy decisions on what needs to be, what needs to be, what needs to take place in order to meet the needs of your constituents, as well as to budget fiscally, make sure that this budget is balanced.
Thank you, Madam Administrator. Chair calls on Commissioner from the Fifth, Commissioner Don Clark. You have the floor, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Hey, Ms. Allen, you said a mouthful with that one. I mean, we wouldn't be where we are without you being as transparent as you have been. We're just really kind of pulling the curtain back and just giving it to us as is. I know some of the media stepped out, but I really hope that the media is partnering and with delivering the message correctly. This is a recommendation that you and your staff are presenting to us for a decision. This is not the final determination. This is not what's going out on the street as you all have presented it. This is what you're presenting the governing body to take in as we go forward towards trying to balance out next year's budget.
Yes, sir.
And I want to make sure and clarify that, because unfortunately, folks get bits and pieces of information, and we end up with stories saying, the Augusta Commission has approved this and that. So, again, thank you and the team for these recommendations to get us to the final point of where we need to get to. And to clarify, the separate session with the NGOs, we're going to go more into those aspects as well, right?
Yes, sir. That's what we were looking for on the November 6 meeting.
Okay, all right. So, I'll hold those questions in that regard, but thank you, ma'am.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Commissioner Clark. Madam Administrator, as I understand, our next session is coming on Monday, October 27, 9 o'clock in the morning?
Yes, sir.
All right. And again, what's the focus of that session?
The focus on that would be our utilities department and their discussion on the rates, and then we would also be looking at our vegetation and grounds maintenance division and RCCI.
All right. Don't see any other colleagues in the queue. I think that concludes our business for the day, hearing or seeing no dissension to that. Madam Clerk, this budget session is hereby adjourned. Thank you so much for being here. Have a great day.
Thank you.